Welcome to Appointed. Well, welcome to Appointed. It's my incredible pleasure to be joined today by two Ottawa City councillors who have been instrumental in a fight to ensure that basic income is available, something that of course, everybody knows is near and dear to my heart. And in fact, recently were the proponents of a special resolution that passed, making Ottawa now one of several hundred municipalities in this country to support a guaranteed livable basic income. And so I am very, very pleased to be joined today by councillor Teresa Kavanaugh and councillor Marty Carr. And Teresa, I understand you were the mover of the motion, and Marty, you were the secondor. And I really want to jump right in. What was it about basic income and the idea that the municipality should take a position on it that prompted you to want to move this resolution? You know, who worked with you on it besides, I'm pretty sure councillor Carr worked with you on it, given that she was the secondor. But who else? And how did you get to this point? If you could give us a bit of history and of course, you to jump in councillor Carr as well?
Well, I'd have to give full credit to Marty because it started out with Ottawa Public Health. It was a motion that was moved by councillor Carr, Marty, at Ottawa Public Health. And this came, and I'll let her finish the story, but she was telling me it was in discussions with our chief medical officer in terms of how to combat against poverty, which is of course, a huge problem when you're talking about the how to determinants of health and the concern we have in the community. So I kind of plucked it out and felt that it was necessary to have it come from the city. And so it's basically not quite identical, but pretty much so. We took the motion from Ottawa Public Health, which passed unanimously, and brought it forward to the council. And that was a risk because there are people that will not support it. We knew that. But it was a risk worth taking because I felt that what the chief medical officer felt was important should be commended and supported by council. And it was. And I'm very grateful to my colleagues for that. And I'm very grateful for Marty for working on it so hard. So we're on the same page. I just wanted to see it being said by the council.
Marty, did you want to add in what was the impetus for you in this?
Yeah, certainly. I mean, I, both councillor Cavanagh and I serve on the Board of Health. And in conversation with Dr Etches, I've had many conversations since being appointed to the Board of Health about concern about social determinants, the impacts that we're seeing, particularly in areas such as food insecurity and the rapid increase in food prices. And you know, the impact it's having when people are consistently worried about having to provide with their family, the impact it has on their mental health. So it was in terms of that discussion that we agreed with Dr Etches that I should bring it forward, the support of the Board of Health to advocate for the bills that are currently before, for both your bill, the Senate and the House of Commons. And it's something that we see as councillors every day. You know, being a municipal councillor, you are dealing with some of the most difficult situations that people are facing with respect to homelessness, poverty, mental health issues, you know, long neglected areas, you know, years and years of underfunding for mental health, years and years of funding for, you know, housing. And we're really feeling sort of the complex of many, many different crises presently, crisis in mental health, crisis in homelessness, that, you know, now we've got a crisis in global migration that's bringing more people to the country that need assistance, you know, opioid crisis, all of these things. And in my view, you know, one of the biggest things that we can do in order to assist with these, that improve the social determinants, public health determinants, is a universal basic income.
Great. Thank you very much for that. And yes, you've touched on a number of the reasons why, in fact, I, along with Leah Gazan, a member of parliament for in Treaty One territory, brought forth these resolutions. And we included, as you know, the fact that there needs to be consultations with municipalities because you're at the front end of seeing the impact of all of these issues. And the years that I spent working with folks who were criminalized and imprisoned, it was very clear that they were there predominantly because of the failure of many other systems, including the lack of economic support and equality. And so I'm very pleased you've done this. And I understand that it wasn't a unanimous vote, as it was in the health context. And it's very interesting, and I'm really glad you raised the chief medical officer's view, because it's, I don't think it's any accident that now that Newfoundland and Labrador, for instance, have a doctor, a medical doctor as the premier, they are also looking at these sorts of issues and have talked about the fact that income or poverty is the number one determinant of health. It's also, as we know, a social determinant of, you know, in terms of whether you end up in crisis, whether you end up including homelessness and incarceration. So what were the objections of the councillors who didn't support it? And what do you see as some of the issues? We've developed a whole series of fact sheets around some of the issues people have raised, many of them, quite frankly, mythology, in terms of people have said, oh, we can't afford it, and ignoring the fact that we currently in this country alone spend over $80 billion keeping people stuck in poverty, not getting them out of poverty, not allowing them to rebound. And these sorts of mechanisms will provide other options. What were some of the arguments that other councillors made against this kind of, or this resolution in particular, but this kind of initiative?
Sorry, forgot to take time. They did not make speeches. This was at the end of a very long council meeting of almost six hours, and the motion came up. We knew who was supporting it, we knew who wasn't supporting it, but they did not verbalize why they were voting against it. We can generalize that there's a concern that this is handouts and government support. That is usually the reason that most people don't support it, that it will be used for the wrong purposes. And we're going to make things worse because we're giving people money to, for bad habits. Let's just put it that way. So, but I'm generalizing big time. And they did not debate it, they just voted. And it's a disappointment because it's a learning curve, I think that they need to know. And I think that it's still possible. And that, yeah, that's, that's kind of the conclusion at our level. I appreciate those who did support it. And sometimes it takes, you know, a bit of time before it really sinks in that, you know, it's not that weird and crazy an idea. I had to be convinced. I had to be convinced myself when people approached me about, you know, you should support a basic income. It didn't take much. But I realized that, wait a second, we've been doing this for a long time already. We have guaranteed income supplements. We have, in the old days, baby bonuses and child supports. Those are all really basic incomes. I was somebody who got a baby bonus back when my kids were little. And when I was a mother at home, that was the only income I got. That was it. $64 for two kids. And I loved when that cheque came in the mail. It was mine. And it was, it just made me feel good. But it, you know, like, it's an idea that's old. And everyone talks about it as if it's something new. Yet we've been playing around with it for a long time, not to even mention SERB. We, it helps people. When I think of students, the fact that we're talking about, you know, over 17, the freedom it would give them to choose where they get to go to school, and to help them along. We used to do that. We used to have grants to help people in lower incomes to get to university. I'm the product of that. So we've done it in different ways. We just haven't completely finished the project. And which left a lot of gaps. So that's where we are.
And I'll just add, councillor Kavanaugh, it was interesting that we didn't debate it. I think sometimes that there's a reticence to have these sort of broader discussions at the municipal council table, because many people feel that we should simply be sticking to what our mandate is. And I think sometimes we'll get a vote against it just because there's a belief that, you know, the council table is not the place to have those debates. I mean, certainly, there was people that voted no against it that I was surprised about, given interactions that I've had with them. For example, in my role as, I'm the Accessibility Advisory Committee councillor liaison. And, you know, as a municipal councillor, we're often frequently dealing with people who have disabilities, preventing them from work, but also people who can't work because they're looking after somebody with a disability. And so, you know, I've had discussions with some of the councillors who voted no about those situations and how a universal basic income can really assist people in situations such as that. Also, I've had discussions about how, you know, I think, for me, working at home during the pandemic, prior to being elected, I was a federal public servant for over 20 years, and had a lot of discussions in my professional life about the implications that people, women at home were feeling in an environment where they didn't feel safe, and now you are locked up at home with perhaps somebody that didn't make you feel safe. And, you know, really, what are the opportunities for those women to leave when they have no guarantee of income? So I know that I've had discussions with some of my council colleagues around the table around this. I think for some, it was just too political of a discussion. But I think it is, like councillor Kavanaugh mentioned, you know, she had to be convinced. I think the more discussion that there is on the table, the more people will realize the value that this can have, particularly for some of our historically marginalized and vulnerable citizens.
I should mention, so, oh, I'm chair of Ottawa Community Housing. Marty's also on Ottawa Community Housing. We have the opportunity to go into communities of social housing and see up close the needs. And one of the big needs has been food insecurity. It's one thing to give people housing affordability. And these are people that are now in affordable housing, and they're guaranteed not to be paying more than 30% of their income on housing. But it still leaves a huge gap. And the food pantries, food banks are all full. And they're overwhelmed. So that has been a big pressure that's been on my mind. And I know Marty's mentioned this to me before.
Well, and in fact, I'm old enough to remember when food banks were introduced as a temporary measure until we dealt with the reform of social and economic systems of supports for people. And we still haven't done that. So, yeah, and it was very, it's fascinating to hear you talk about this as well, because two days ago, I was meeting with a group of youth at the Youth Services Bureau, and one who's a young man living in public housing. And he talked about the fact that he can't get food, money for food security. But the, and the only way that he can get help with some of the issues he has around his health issues is to go get medication. We were talking about the pharmacare bill and that context, and the fact that we won't provide, that there are such siloed approaches that will provide in some sectors, housing, and some sectors, medical support. But if people make more money than, or are no longer eligible for social assistance, they're then kicked off also the drug and the medical and the dental programs. And so this young man was talking about, he didn't, he wanted to do a bit more work so he could have a bit more food security. But if he did that, he wouldn't be eligible for the medic, for the medical support that he gets, which ironically is to deal with the results of food insecurity. He has some stomach and digestion issues and some other health issues that have been developed because of the food insecurity and the lack of healthcare he's had historically. And he's only a teenager. Like, it's, it was horrific to think of that. And so oftentimes, people who are against this are saying things that, you know, it's the stigma of people being poor, somehow they're poor because of, due to their own fault, quote unquote. And that stigma extends to, to the point where people ignore what we're already paying, the monies, the massive amount of money that is going out for healthcare, particularly emergency healthcare, for pharmacare, to, for drugs to deal with, or mask, or a treat, in issues that are created by the poverty. And when I was up in the Yukon last year, and similarly, Whitehorse is looking at this, there was a woman who came afterwards, after I was talking about a bit of research that Dr Jiaying Zhao has done out of UBC, where she talks about the scarcity mindset that poverty creates, that, and she's a psychologist. So she's researching this because, you know, people say, oh, you know, you just have to train people or educate them, and then they'll spend better, or they'll budget better, or all the rest. And she actually proved, well, two major things that I think are relevant to what you're talking about, and what we're all talking about, and what some of the negative views are, which is, she showed two things. One, that when people don't have enough money, they actually cannot think beyond the most immediate need they have next, whether that's to be kept warm. In this woman's case, she was sleeping in her car. It was whether she could find gas to keep the car running so that she wouldn't freeze to death, or food. And food and shelter are the main things. And unless those are met, people can't address this. And after that, one of the women came up and said, you know, I wouldn't have believed that even a year ago. But when my abusive partner left, or when I finally left, this were her words, there's lots of reasons people don't leave, as we've, we know, in terms of, again, economic insecurity being a huge one, immigration status another. But in her case, she said, when I left, I suddenly found out that he had transferred everything into his name. Now, she was a teacher. And she said, you know, people assume that someone homeless is someone who has no education, has no experience, has no abilities. And she said, but as soon as I was in my car without money, trying to keep myself warm, all I could think of is where I was going to get the money. And she said, as soon as I had housing, within a week, I could apply for jobs, and within a month, I was re-employed. And so, you know, she was talking about the evidence, even in those kinds of situations where you're usually not in an economically insecure situation, it can happen, you know, so fast that you have that scarcity mindset. The other thing that Dr Zhao has found is, and I don't know of any other study that's done this, that's looked at basic income. She asked people, she surveyed people to find out what they spent the money on. She did the cash transfers in Vancouver, where they gave $7,500 to 50 people who were homeless. And now they're doing it to 200, $8,500 to 200 people, $8,500 to 200 people. And what she found was spending on what she called temptation goods, drugs, alcohol, and cigarettes, reduced, including for people with addictions, which was the complete opposite of what most people, the stereotype. But also, I mean, I must admit, I was even surprised. I thought, you know, I wouldn't expect it necessarily to all go, but especially someone who already has addictions. And then I thought about it. And of course, I've worked in the prisons, and drug use and addictions always increase when there are few programs, less, less access to family and community supports. We see drug use and addictions increase within a prison setting. So makes sense when you, the opposite is true too. And so those kinds, that kind of information, I think, is important to get out. And what was it that convinced you, councillor Kavanaugh, to come on side? What, you know, was there, I mean, a lot of times, people will say it's the economic issues. But I'm curious what it was that was your, that you learned about that changed your mind?
Well, it wasn't on my radar immediately. And I got called to a meeting of residents. And I've got a new section of my ward that I just inherited from Kitchi Sippi and McKellar Park. And I was meeting with some people there. And they wanted me to come to their house and have a meeting. It was Joe Foster, and who's been a major advocate on basic income for a long time. And I was just so impressed, sitting around this living room and chatting with these people, that that was their top of mind. It's not usually the top of mind issue I get called into. Usually, it's something more related to their properties or whatever. He was, you know, his concern was basic income. And I really enjoyed talking to him. And I've been working very closely with a member of my team, Sue Garvey. Sue Garvey is on my team. And she's the former executive director of Cornerstone. And she's been really helpful to bring that perspective to me as well, since she's been working with homeless women for many, many years. She took her retirement, and she's working with me, just part time, just for the fun of it. And these are the special projects I've worked with her on. And we felt, well, we have to do something on this. But I have to admit, and Marty mentioned this, I was discouraged by the fact that we're constantly told, don't put forward motions that are talking about what other levels of government should do. And, and so that kind of held me back. But I was encouraged when it went through with public health. And I thought, okay, if public health can do it, why aren't we saying that let's, let's support Dr Etches and the Public Health Board and go forward? So it evolved. And I'm really grateful for it. Because it's something that, you know, the more I thought about it, and the more I read about it, and I did manage to get to part of the conference on the big conference, the Basic Income Guaranteed Conference, and hearing from some of these experts, and I heard about Vancouver's story, by the way. And I've been reading about what's going on in the United States. It's a little piecemeal, but it's encouraging. And the more and more information I got, it just seemed like a no brainer. So it was, it was something that was always floating around. And we just have to put it into some kind of a shape to, to make it accessible. I know people that are looking after family members who have accessibility needs, like severe accessibility needs, where they can't even be left alone. And that means that person can't work. They don't fit into the box. It's, it's, it's like a guarantee of poverty. So it's, we're seeing these situations in our own wards and just in the, in the general world. So there's so much to do. And on different levels, I think about youth, a lot of issues with youth in social housing, they get tempted by easy money, you know, and go the wrong direction. Let's put it that way. Would that happen if they had something that was guaranteed to them so they could build their life, so they're not fishing around for these other ways of trying to make a living, as it were? Easy, fast money. That's some of the real, realistic stories that are happening around us. So, and I'm encouraged by these pilot projects. And so, you know, breaking down the stereotypes, as you've already said, I was encouraged to hear those stories about that in real life, people want enough to eat, they want a warm place to live, and make themselves better. They want to improve their lives, like we all do. And that's what they do, when they don't have to worry about where their next meal is coming from.
So true, so true. And thank you for that. I mean, the same criticism has been brought to Leah and I about our bill, because it impacts on, obviously municipalities and provinces and territories in particular is what's being picked up. And yet, and I keep asking for someone to do a costing of what it costs right now for all of these siloed programs, that if we could bring the financial component, much like we did with SERB, under one, you know, I think it could be done through Revenue Canada, that, you know, the bill doesn't mandate that, it just, that's one idea. But imagine what we could save in administration, and how people, time could be freed up. The number of social workers I've talked to, and more importantly, in some ways, social work students who are just starting out, they were saying, you know, they've, you know, one class that I was talking to in Montreal a few months back, they were saying, they were really excited to be training as social workers, until they found out that the main job they may end up getting is policing people's lifestyles or incomes, as, you know, as people working in social services, and how that what they really would like to do, they were interested in the guaranteed livable income idea, because they said what they'd really like to do is have that taken off somewhere else, and they be able to just focus on providing the supports that they're being trained to provide. And, and so, you know, some, some folks are only looking at the cost, not looking at the benefits, or the cost savings to other areas. Because as we know from Dr Evelyn Forgé's research around the Minkum Project, but also Hugh Siegel's work, the, the cost savings in terms of healthcare, especially emergency healthcare, dental care, as well as in the criminal legal system, and the investment in people, the human costs that you talk about, that when people are desperate and they do other things to, to get the resources they need, it's often at the expense of others, and in their families, and their communities, and costs us all. And, and we know from, that when, when poor people have money, that money goes back into the economy, the local economy. It doesn't go offshore into taxation or tax havens. And so it's great. Councillor Carr, what was it brought you to the, I mean, you mentioned the health issue and the work you were doing. But when did you first learn about the, this whole idea, and what got you on board, and wanting to see this happen in Ottawa and beyond, for all of Canada?
Well, certainly, I've sort of always followed the conversation on universal basic income. And when I was first elected, it was, I wrote an op-ed about food insecurity that was published in The Citizen. And someone named Rob Rayner, who is the weaver of Tay Valley Township, he contacted me about it, you know, because the food insecurity piece is such a big piece. And so it's sort of been on my radar. And I was sort of a latecomer to politics, I would say, you know, not, I would say, most of my counterparts get elected before they're 50. And, you know, so the ability to have a job where you're meeting with people day to day and hearing about their circumstances, to me, was really quite a turning point in understanding the depth of poverty and the issues. And my ward has been home to shelters, community centers turned into shelters for four years, started in the pandemic. And, you know, they are my residents. And I would meet with people who were concerned about the food, and hearing their stories, how they fell into poverty, was fascinating to me. You know, I met with a woman who, you know, by all means, was completely independently functioning, and she got taken by a fraud scheme with an online lover, and lost everything, and ended up in the shelter situation. And, you know, really, understanding, you know, people have biases about who is unhoused, but really seeing how it could just be that one thing. And it's interesting that you talk about, you know, the administration, that's often the argument that we hear about UBI, that it's going to be too much to administer all of this. But we've, because our whole social security system has been developed around a series of programs on a program by program approach, and not a systems approach, you know, I'm really interested in the conversation about how much this could save in light of what I've witnessed over the last year and a half. Like even councillor Kavanaugh mentioned, she's the chair of OCH. I mean, every year, you have to prove that you can keep your unit, the paperwork involved, you know, in all of these different programs to sustain, like these multitude of programs. We're looking at this at a UBI on a systems approach. To me, it would just seem, you know, that's my observations as a city councillor. And you were talking about, you know, the value of, you know, the money gets spent back in the economy. I've been working with the community health centers over the past few weeks, because they're working on a proposal to increase, to get an increase in city dollars as part of the poverty reduction strategy for income tax clinic. Because what we're finding is, people are not claiming all of their benefits. They don't know they exist. They're afraid of the government. They're afraid of this. And yet, you know, I'm extremely supportive of this, championing this proposal. But at the same time, if it could be, you know, if we looked at things from a more systems approach, where we didn't need to have all of this, and there was a better coordination with Revenue, Canada Revenue Agency and UBI, like, I like to look at things at the high level, how things could be fixed, as opposed to just, you know, sticking a Band-Aid on all these situations that we see as municipal councillors on a day to day basis.
That's great. Well, I think it's fantastic. I'm very pleased that you were able to join us and talk a bit about the That's great. Well, I think it's fantastic. I'm very pleased that you were able to join us and talk a bit about the the work and what led up to this resolution. I'm one of many who hopes that we see this take off. It's, as you probably know, our bill is at committee waiting to finish the committee report and get reported back. Leah's is now active in at second reading in the House of Commons, so hopefully when we resume. And more and more municipalities are clearly saying they want to do this. And we know when the PE or not the PE, sorry, the PEI wants to do it as well. And Nunavut is looking at it, Newfoundland, Labrador, BC had their report. And there's a whole, but there's been some really good critiques of some of the shortcomings of that report. But even there, they said an incremental approach was needed. So they they talk about this sort of inching towards a basic income. But there's increased impetus and I'm hopeful that we'll see some movement in the coming years because certainly people need it. And I want to thank you both very much from for doing this in Ottawa in the area that I live in, I call home. And and so vitally important and keep up the great work.
Thank you so much, Kim. Thank you for bringing forward your bill. And so we have something to to point to.
Oh, you're most welcome. Thank you. Take good care.
Thank you.